Oh, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. Time is four oh seven P M. March twenty first, two thousand twenty three. As a reminder, please note that board meetings are being recorded for the convenience of those unable to attend this video conference. A recording and closed captioning of this meeting will be posted to the Bur's YouTube channel following the meeting. Alex, could you please call the role?
Certainly. Phoebe Shaday Arnold.
Here.
Thank you. Tazin Azad.
Hello.
Thank you. Aaron Bogad. Chantel Cabrera.
Present.
Thank you. Janil Shakon.
Present.
Hi, thank you. Lily Chan. Marjorie Dean Stog.
Present.
Thank you. Kari Edwards. Gregory Faulkner.
Present.
Thank you. Anita Garcia. Cherie Gibson. I can see you on the list there. Can you hear us, Cherie?
I believe she may have maybe have.
Yeah, I'm I'm logging in through my phone, but some reason on my computer it's not coming up. So give me a second while I work through it.
Okay, I'm putting you down as present. Anthony Giordano.
Present.
Thank you. Angela Green. Dr. Green, I see you on the list. I can't hear you, though. Navid Hassan. Allison Hirsch.
Present on behalf of Controller Brad Lander. I may have to hop off early today, in which case John Dorsa will be my alternate.
Thank you. We note that John Dorsa is also present. Michelle Joseph. Ruth Maria Kenley. Jessamine Lee.
Present.
Thank you. John Maderick.
Present.
Thank you. Donald Nesbit.
Present.
Thank you. Alan Ong.
Present.
Thank you. Kalir Salas Ramirez. Mahisha Sap. Thank you. Sarita Scott. Or Karina Pollan.
Karina Pollan, present.
Hi, thank you. Thomas Shepard.
Present.
Thank you. Gladys Ward. Ephraim Zachary. Okay, I'm gonna call Angela Green again. Okay, she may have stepped away, but either way, we do have Quorum Chair.
Thank you, Alex. So the first item on the agenda is calendar item number one. Noting of the minutes, excuse me, noting of the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Retirement held on February seventh, two thousand twenty three. May I have a motion to consider?
Don't move, Donald Nesbit.
Okay, so I saw a hand and two people. So thank you, Jessamine, and I'll do a second by Tony Giordano. Is there any discussion on minutes? Hearing none. When I call all in favor, if you wish to vote in favor of approving the minutes, please unmute yourself and respond in favor. Similarly, if you wish to oppose or abstain from the vote, please unmute yourself and respond accordingly when I call out any opposed or any abstentions. All in favor of approving the minutes for February seventh, two thousand twenty three, please respond in favor.
I don't.
I.
I.
Cherie Gibson.
I.
Chantel Cabrera.
I'm Marjorie Dean Stag.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the Executive Director's Update. Sandy, do you have any remarks for us?
Yes, thank you, Tom. For headcount, we have open positions, open positions of five today with new, three new hires beginning in the next few weeks and interviews beginning for a member services position, which is going to be filled in the next few weeks, which prospectively leaves us with one open headcount. Turnover has seemed to moderate recently. I'd like to congratulate Michelle Pyram, today Williams and the leadership team and human resources teams who have done a great job managing through this period. I think we are probably outperforming many of the agencies in the city. They've done a great job for us. A little bit of a longer velocity project update today. We're actually moving our velocity project under quality assurance management and disbanding part of it. It's because we've had been, have had significant successes in rollouts. We've completed all the major rollouts pertaining to the velocity project, upgraded to Amazon Web Services, deployed many improvements to existing functionality in the C P M S system, implemented product enhancements that will benefit membership and Burr staff. Since the completion of the rollouts, Burr has deployed six Postgo Live delivery builds, which include interim processing, P P M S exports, chapter fifty six updates, launched the Campaign Center, which easily allows Burr to connect with the members via email, secure message and S M S, in addition to one hundred or more product enhancements. Notably, each build was delivered on time and we stayed within the expected budget. Postgo Live Delivery Builds remain. The upcoming project deliveries include fiscal year twenty three build improvements such as accounting reports, member self-service improvements. The accounting reports will significantly decrease the manual effort required by our accounting and data teams for monthly reconciliation and annual auditing requests. Burr is working with I T security also on reopening member self-service loan application widgets and launching the member self-service Q P P T D A refunds widget. These widgets will offer our membership convenient alternatives to apply for funds with a limited secure dispersment option. A full reopening of member self-service with identity access management tools has been paused until Burr completes the R F P process for identity confirmation services. In the interim, in-person enrollment in member self-service is a requirement either at our counselor's offices or at meetings we've been organizing around the city in major schools or union locations. For fiscal year twenty four, we plan to continue our momentum and deliver at least four Postgo Live Delivery Builds to correct bugs and enhance the core administrative applications. In terms of the risk profile of the system, Burr has successfully onboarded Shams Ahmed as Deputy Director of Information Security. After detailed discussions, Burr will be reopening three transactional member self-service widgets, loans, Q P P refunds and T D A refunds, which will with certain dispersment limitations, we will be allowing dispersment only to pre-existing account E T Fs or check delivery locations. The risk level is low. The Velocity Project Managers are Lady Moran and Jessica Samuels and their team are to be commended for excellent work, keeping the project on schedule and under budget. Counseling activity has picked up significantly. Our counselors have settled into their new office space on the first floor at sixty five Court Street. Each counselor is managing three to four scheduled appointments each day and walk-ins, which are increasing. And are, so counselors are seeing between the, between scheduled and unscheduled appointments, seven to eight people each day. Counseling appointments are scheduled out to December twenty twenty three for general meetings, which tells you the people are surging to our counselors. And for urgent appointments, which are for members retiring within the next ninety days, we are scheduled up to May twenty twenty three. We've continued to onboard new trustees. Welcome to all of you. And Karen Wong will be reaching out to those trustees that have not had the onboarding experience related to Burr generally and investments specifically. Please watch for Karen's emails. We'd like to get an onboarding session with all the trustees who have not experienced it. Tonight's meeting is largely focused on investment strategy. We'll be asking for approval of the authority of the controller to invest and execute instructions given via resolutions of trustees. We will seek approval to conduct the asset allocation analysis, which we implement with detailed liability and cash flow analysis. We will seek approval for the net zero plan implementation. And Antonio will provide an overview of the history and activities of Burr's Investment Strategy Department. We'll also be asking for an alternative member of the Audit Committee. Please volunteer if you're interested. This is a very important part of the Burr's overall program of system and operational improvements. And finally, well, not finally, Merrick Diskowitz will be reviewing the actuarial preliminary fiscal twenty twenty four contribution, which we updated later this year. And then finally, for educational opportunities, I want to thank the trustees that attended the Markets Group event last week. I hope you got some value from the attendance, just to let you know that Antonio and I were both members of the presentation materials that were offered. And Conan Milstream, a law firm, will facilitate two sessions on fiduciary training for trustees and staff. On April third, from one to two thirty P M will be an in-person session at fifty five Water Street for Burr staff. Trustees are welcome to that also. On April third, from four P M to five thirty, there'll be a virtual session for our trustees. Calendar invites have been distributed and we'll be following up on attendance and reminding folks of these events. And then finally, finally, May twentieth to twenty first, National Conference of Public Employee Retirement Systems University is offering the trustee educational seminar and the N C P R's accredited fiduciary program in conjunction with their annual conference and expo. For any trustees or interested in attending, recall that Burr will cover any costs related to these opportunities and it can assist in organizing participation. And that's all from me tonight, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. I do want to say, just for the record, Dr. Salas Ramirez is here. I do have one question for you, Sandy.
Yes.
I, I'm wondering, we were talking about the the self-service portal, right? And I'm, I'm wondering how, where are we in the, you know, the R F P process, right? Because, you know, that has, it was turned off for a reason, right? And, you know, I know we took some steps to make affected members whole, right? But we also turned it off so that we can prevent these kinds of breaches until we were able to put a system in place, you know, to verify the identity of those logging in. So I'm really interested in knowing where are we in that process? Because, you know, our members do use loan services and such, you know, and such at higher rates than the other systems. And to have this system offline, you know, does create a barrier for our members. So I'm just wondering, where are we in that process?
Yep, just to inform trustees who mean, who were not involved in the board prior. When we initially opened up the member self-service portal, we experienced a cyber event where retirees generally who had their P I I existing in the world were imitated by criminals who set up member self-service applications and then adjusted the distribution of monies to the wrong people. This was caught mostly because of the sensitivities of our payments being crucial to our retirees. M S S was shut down. We referred the matter both to cybersecurity in New York City, the F B I and New York City detectives. We have not heard recently about activities there. But in the interim since that event, we have only activated member self-service for people we can physically identify. So they have to be present in front of a counselor or present in front of an M C U representative when they get their accounts activated, which is basically any new members who visit counseling or members that can show up at, say, a tweet event, which we had a number of months ago to get their member self-service activated. We operate for anyone with an effective member self-service activation. They can apply for these transactions online. We still operate with paper documents, which are available online in P D F form, and we can, they can deliver to us via mail or physically. So we haven't shut off their ability to get loans, but it is more difficult to do the paper process. We hope to have M S S implement a specific I D confirmation rubric for the machine level. This is likely to be something like I D dot me. I D dot me is a third-party provide, provided I D confirmation service currently operating for the Social Security, for the unemployment office in New York City, for the I R S. I actually have experienced it myself. It's not all that extreme. We have to go through the procurement process, though. This is a procurement where the R F P has not been issued yet. We've only recently onboarded Shams Ahmed, our cybersecurity effort. It took us, it may have taken us two years. I don't know exactly the amount of time it took to get that, to get Shams onboarded. I can tell you that I interviewed three or four people myself and we made the job offer to one person who rejected it, to a second person who showed up for four hours and then left. And Shams has been on staff now for about a month and a half, and it's on his, his desk to execute. I don't know if that's comprehensive enough for you, Tom, but.
It is.
We're hopeful, we're hopeful to have it activated December, by December twenty twenty three, and that sounds like a long time, but we have to run through the procurement process.
No, fair. Thank you. I see Tazin's hand up.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair. My, my question is referring to the bit that you mentioned about counseling. So obviously, some correspondence indicating members having difficulties in retaining a counseling appointment at a timely manner. And you just mentioned how that process has been improved. So if you could elaborate on how, how much better the response to counseling request is as compared to prior, I would love to hear that part.
Well, we are trying to implement as much virtual counseling as we can in order to facilitate that. The reality is, we don't have the staff to handle much more than the flow we're managing now. What we do expect is surges. The usually, the surge comes at the end of the summer before the school year begins. So we will see a surge there and we're managing it as best we can. There are, there is a growing number of walk-ins and we accommodate them as they come in. We still have issues related to staffing. We have significant wait times at the call center and we have clearly some wait times at counseling for people who want to have interim counseling efforts. We are prioritizing people who have expected retirements in the next ninety days and we will always prioritize those relationships. So for someone who is retiring near term, they get through, they get in the door first.
And a quick follow-up, Chair. Are the members sort of told of the predicament that we are all facing because of the lack of staffing? I wonder if they have the complete understanding of how that backlogs or slows down the timeline?
Yeah, we, we post the scheduling on our website. They can schedule through the website and we talk about it all the time. Unfortunately, like most consumers of a product, frustration is hard to avoid on their part and we're sensitive to it. We try to respond as best we can. And when there are, you know, emergencies, we will make time and we'll get, we'll respond as best we can. You know, the team led by Maria Seppen and Dallas Childs have actually done an excellent job. I think for people who actually get through and have conversations with our counselors, we get very good marks. It is where we get delays, causes frustration on members' parts and it's, you know, they're not wrong. It's just difficult to do much more than we can do.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Tazin.
Thank you. I will add one more thing, just, I want to add to something that Sandy mentioned when we were talking about the N C P R's conference. I had an opportunity, I think, there are a few members here or a few trustees here who have had that opportunity. And, you know, the Ted's Conference or the Ted's Seminars were really good also. So I would also, and certainly co-sign what Sandy said about the the usefulness of that training in, in our roles as trustees. So, you know, definitely reach out. And if you haven't already signed up and are interested, please sign up and, you know, attend the conference. I think it's in New Orleans this year, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, so.
Excuse me, Tom, do you hear?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Now I can hear you.
Good, thank you. I had to change my, I heard everyone. I had to change my device. Thank you, everyone, and, and I'm here, Alex, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Angela. Appreciate that. So for the record, Angela Green is here as well. So the next item on this afternoon's agenda are calendar items two through seventeen, The Ordinary Business of Burr's. May I have a motion to consider calendar items two through seventeen?
So, Donald Nesbit.
Thank you, Donald. And may I have a second, please? Thank you, Jessamine. All right. Alex, could you please tell us about the ordinary business of Burr's?
Certainly, these are all the retirements, death benefits and refunds that have been processed since the last meeting of this board.
Thank you, Alex. So we will now vote on these items. All in favor of approving calendar items two through seventeen, please indicate your approval. I approve, Tom.
Hi, Tony.
Angela.
Hi, Alex.
I approve.
I approve. Hi, Jessamine. Hi, Shams.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion carries. The next matter of business is in attorney-client session. May I have a motion to enter attorney-client session?
Don't move, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. And may I have a second, please? Thank you, Jessamine. All right, so all in favor of moving into attorney-client session? Please indicate your, excuse me, ooh, all of those in favor, please indicate so now. Hi, Tom.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, Angela.
Hi, Jessamine. Hi, Kalir. Hi, Marjorie.
Hi, Phoebe.
Thank you. Any opposed? Oh, oh, that was you, Allison?
Yes, that was me. I'm in favor, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. We have a report out from attorney, from attorney-client session. Alex, would you please care to report out?
Yes, Chair. During executive, during attorney-client session, the board discussed and made a decision on a legislative matter. The details of this matter will be made public at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Alex. So the next item on the agenda is calendar item eighteen, Amendment to the Audit Committee Charter. May I have a motion to consider, please? Thank you, Jessamine. May I have a second, please?
Second, Marjorie.
Thank you, Marjorie. All right, Ade, could you please tell us about this resolution?
Yes, could you, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, so this resolution is seeking to make four amendments to the Audit Committee Charter. So the first one is to remove the requirement that the chair of the Audit Committee rotate annually. The second is to state that the election of Audit Committee Chair shall occur at the first committee meeting of the year. The third is to clarify the Audit Committee's responsibilities relating to external auditors and the review of Burr's financial statements. And the fourth and last item is to state that the Audit Committee is empowered to review any disagreements between management and internal auditors.
Thank you, Ade. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I moved to adopt the recommendations by unanimous consent.
I'm sorry, I just have one question. I just took me a long time to unmute.
Yes.
Are we voting on all four of the recommendations as one? Or are we, and maybe I should do this after we make the motion, or are we voting on each one individually?
Well, I, I was in the process of making a motion to adopt them all by unanimous consent.
Well. Okay, so.
That's my motion. I moved that the, that the recommendations be adopted by unanimous consent.
Seconded by Tony.
Okay, without objection. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry to be difficult. Pardon for, Elise, honey, I need you to give me one minute. I'm sorry. I know, but I'm on my conference call. I'll be right there, okay, my love? I'll be right there. Um, he's on a call too, honey. I'll be right there. Um, sorry, I do not, I don't know. I would like to register that I am not in support of voting on it unanimous consent. I assume I'm happy to lose a vote, but I.
I think we just did.
I, but I thought a motion to, don't you have to second a motion and whatnot? I don't know how the process was.
Correct, I didn't hear a second and I didn't hear the vote. That's where I was confused.
I think Tony, I think Tony seconded the motion. I made the motion for unanimous consent. The chair called for objection. There was no objection. Motion was adopted.
But don't you have to say, sorry, I thought we were, the vote was on the motion for unanimous consent, not on unanimous consent of the issue. So.
No.
When you make a motion for, can I finish? I'm sorry, Greg, can I just finish?
Sure.
So my understanding of our process is you're making a motion for unanimous consent. Tony seconded that motion. We then take a vote to support moving this on unanimous consent.
No.
Or not, and then.
All right, all right.
But we're voting on, we, we vote to move forward on every motion.
I just wanted to clarify what my motion was. My motion was that the four items be adopted, the recommendations be adopted by unanimous consent. There was a second to the motion. The chair presented the motion to the body. There was no objection. The motion was adopted.
He didn't even get a chance to object, is what I was saying.
I don't think that was an official vote. So the process has to be followed with anything that you motion, which means we all have to say aye or abstain or.
Not, not on unanimous consent.
Well, here.
Let me ask the lawyer.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Timeout, 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 timeout. I want, I, I think in order to eliminate confusion here, right?
Roll call.
You know, maybe doing this by unanimous consent may not be, may not be the best move, right? And, you know, I, I get expediency and moving things along, but I also do not want to, there to be any issue about whether or not anything we did was on the up and up or legit or not, right? So where we were in this, right, was there is a, there was a motion to consider this by unanimous consent. And that was seconded, right? So we have to deal with that first and then move to the actual issue at hand, so.
Point of order. That, that wasn't my motion. Ultimately, my motion was that the four items be adopted by unanimous consent because in the interest of fairness, what I'll do is I would move to reconsider the previous question and then we can go back and do it all over again.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Am I, Tony, I'm back, Tony, you're.
Yes, yes, you have the ability.
All right.
You can reconsider your own, you, as the person who made the motion, you can reconsider. You can make the motion to reconsider.
On the prevailing side, so I would move to reconsider the previous motion.
All right.
Seconded.
All right.
Objection.
You object to reconsidering the motion that you want to vote on to reconsider the previous item?
I object to that, yes.
Okay.
Reconsidering it? Just want to keep it going through?
You want to keep the motion that was just passed? You know.
I go back to that it wasn't passed because we were not given an opportunity to, to object to that. So that's where I'm at.
Well, I think that Controller's representative objected.
After the motion was adopted.
I objected as soon as I could get off mute. I don't.
Yeah, I know. And that's why I made the motion to reconsider. That's why I made the motion to reconsider, so that we could take that into account and go back and redo it. But there was an objection to that.
Right, Cherie, I don't think you meant to re, re, to, to object to the reconsideration, so we could go back and take a vote.
If you want to go back to where I were objected was from the original, where Allison objected, I objected from there. So from there, if you accept our objections, which should have been done, then we, then there is no putting forth a reconsideration.
We're in a semantical argument. I think everybody wants to do the right thing here. So, let's, let's.
It's not semantics when you call Robert's rules of order, when you call it. So it's not semantics.
If, the reality is the motion passed, we can move on. Greg, Greg is allowing his motion to be reconsidered. It was already voted on. That's probably.
It was voted on.
Well, we could check the record. There's a recorded record. We could move on and we could check the record and come back, if that's what you want to do.
I'm sorry, I have a hard stop. Chair, if I may interrupt, can we just redo the vote and?
I would love to.
That's, that's what I was trying to do.
And I would, I would love to do this the right way.
That's what I was trying to do. Make a motion to reconsider the previous vote. That would pass and then we could go back and revote. That's what I was just attempting to do.
Motion to reconsider, only the person who made the motion can make that, can, can reconsider. I seconded it. If we support, if we vote to reconsider, then we could go back and do the vote again, everyone.
Is that Chair who's speaking? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Chair?
Yes, like, yes. So, right now, there's a motion to reconsider. Is, is there, is there a second on the motion to reconsider?
Second to reconsider.
Yep. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, please say aye.
Aye.
Hi, Marjorie.
All right. Any opposed to the motion to reconsider? Any abstentions? I abstain.
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 I abstain.
Okay.
The motion to reconsider, I think, takes two thirds.
Y'all killing me here.
I, I think we have about, I think we have at least twelve votes in favor, no?
Yes.
Okay.
And none opposed, right? So, should be good.
All right. So. Let's back up. All right, so.
Chair, I have a, I have a point of clarification.
Yes.
Are we now taking a vote on the?
Now I'm asking for. Yeah, now I'm asking for a motion on the calendar item number eighteen, an amendment to the Audit Committee Charter. Someone raised a question around whether or not we were going to, are we considering all four of those items as a single resolution? Or are we voting on each one of those items individually? But there was no motion to deal with all four of them individually. So as it stands right now, it would be a resolution, a single resolution for all four items. Because the calendar item is an amendment to Audit Committee Charter. It was a resolution, a single resolution.
So I, I would like to. I'm sorry.
Now, I guess my point of clar, a point of clarification, wouldn't we be going back to Greg as the maker of the motion? Of the original motion?
Yes.
Isn't that what we just did?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Greg, could you restate the motion and remake?
Yeah, I, you know. Yeah, what, what I would do is read this, my same motion. I'm, what I'm willing to do is if there's an item that the Controller's representative wants to separate out of a block, then if you could just tell us what that item is and we can separate it out of a block. Is there one that you want us to consider separately?
So, so first of all, I, yeah, yes. And also, if the board decides they don't want to, we don't, if the majority of the board does not want to separate it out of the block, that is, you know, the prerogative of the board. I, so I'm not, you know. I am very, very comfortable with two, three and four. I have some concerns about not have, not rotating the chair of the Audit Committee or not being required to do so. I understand the challenges we've had in finding a chair, but I also think a best practice for an audit committee is to have a rotating chair in order to, you know, ensure perception and reality of independence. And so I am very comfortable supporting the, the other three proposals, but have reservations about that one. And so I, I guess, I don't know Chair Shepherd, if I should put forward a motion to separate that one out.
You should, if that's what you want.
I would like to make a motion to separate option, Amendment One to change shall to may, I think, is the amendment on the rotating of the audit chair each year. I'd like to separate that out of the resolution and into a separate resolution and move forward on the other three.
Okay, so.
So can we adopt the three?
All right, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Before this all spirals out of control again. So Allison, Allison, you know, made a motion here and the motion was to replace the word shall with may in item number one.
No, sorry, that is not my motion.
I, I missed, I didn't get that correct?
No, that's what the resolution does.
Oh, and you want to, but you just want to parse these out, have one separate and two, three and four?
Correct. Separate one into, and then two, three or four.
Okay, forgive me. All right.
Nothing to be forgiven for.
All right.
Yeah. Chair, Chair, so sorry about this. I have another point of clarification. Just, wouldn't it be Greg accepting a friendly amendment to his, to his original motion versus a second motion now coming about?
Yeah. What Allison's actually doing is, is suggesting an amendment. The, with, the only problem is that a friendly amendment would had to. Once the, once the resolution has been presented to the body, it can't be amended. It can only be amended by the body. Even as the maker, I can't do that. It has to come from the body because it's now, it, I no longer own the motion. The trustees now own it.
Got you. Fair enough.
Yeah. Could I just speak to the amendment to change the wording?
Hang on, before we do that, Greg, Effie's hand was up and I, I do want to acknowledge.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, and I expressed my sentiments before, I wasn't too comfortable with items one and two from a governance perspective. I do think we should try our utmost to rotate chairs. And I personally don't think it's a great practice to do it in the first meeting when frequently, we don't even know who the person is. We just met for the first time. I recommended before to maybe do it in the second meeting. I understand that it's good to have a chair from the first meeting, but I think it's long-term better to, to do it in the second meeting. So, I think we all in agreement to do three and four. I don't think there's anybody against those two. And is there a chance to change the language for one? Or it's just a yea or nay vote at this point?
All right, give me a second. I'm trying to digest all of this, right? So you know, there's. And maybe we should discuss our concerns with all of these things before we start putting motions on everything, right? Because then it all gets, gets absolutely confusing.
But you need a motion to discuss.
All right, hang on. Cherie, your hand was up. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So based on all these amendments, okay, I guess this is my point of clarification. Because based on all these amendments, it sounds like we cannot vote on it by unanimous vote. And so it goes back to the original where Greg proposed and Tony, proposed a motion and Tony seconded. You needed to ask if there's any objections. There are objections. And so we're not doing unanimous vote. And so we can go through these point by point like people want, or you put for breaking it out, but let's deal with the immediate that this is not unanimous vote.
Right.
We dealt with that, Cherie, already, or reconsider.
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah.
That's why we made the motion to reconsider. The, Mr. Chair, can I offer just a comment?
The motion is supposed to be to reconsider your motion, not the amendments.
No, no, that's not correct.
Passed already. We're doing this because, because it's, it's, everyone has a, obviously, we were slow on the objections. The objections were put out, no one responded.
No, you didn't even give us a chance to register objections if we're going to be accurate.
No, we agreed with you. That's why we made the motion to reconsider. We agreed with you. And that's why we reconsidered and that's why we're going through the motions now. Because we agreed with you that it was, that it might have been hasty. And people might not have had a chance to object. I just wanted to comment on the amendment that's on the floor now, which is to require the chair to rotate. During this last session, we had a lot of business that needed to come before the Audit Committee. And there wasn't anyone willing to become chair. And as a result, we would not have been able to move forward with some important items. And what we were concerned about is that we might have situations where we were not able to get someone to become chair. And then we could not move the meeting, particularly that first meeting. We, we would have had to adjourn the meeting and there were many important items that were to be considered, that needed to be addressed, and we would not have been able to have the meeting go forward. So I became chair temporarily on the agreement that we would change that rule. And I agree, we should have rotated. It's optimum for this chair, this ship to rotate. But we were in a situation where we just didn't have anyone to run. And we found that we were locked into a situation that would have prevented us from conducting business. So we wanted to have the flexibility that in an emergency such as that, we'd be able to conduct business.
Thank you, Donald. I see your hand up and then Effie.
Yeah, I just have to ask a question and if someone can correct, correct me if I'm wrong. Wasn't the, the language, the previous language actually prevented the same person from actually sitting again in that cage, right? If, that we didn't have anybody else. So the new language change actually doesn't keep the same person in place. It actually allows for the opportunity for that person to sit. Should we have a situation where we can't get another chair, another person to chair?
Yep.
Is that the only, that's the only reason for?
That's the only circumstance. Yeah. In fact, it would, we could even say it's, the chair should rotate in the event that there is no one available that allows the chair to continue. May, maybe that would be wording. If, if there's no one to step forward, that the chair could continue, because I think the chair at the time was willing to stay, but could not. And I think that was the desire of the committee be, because no one wanted to, had the time or could take the job. And, you know, and, and we would have been stuck. We would still probably not have a chair.
I, I'm, I'm gonna interrupt for a second and I think that perhaps, you know, and I would love it if any motions that are, are out there could, I don't know, y'all figure out the Roberts Rules people how to withdraw all of them. But there is enough going on here to where I feel like we need to hash it all out and understand exactly what we're gonna be doing before we do it, right? And be clear about what we're gonna do when we do it. So then that way, we're not in this kind of almost ta-da kind of moment where it's like, you know, you know, we know what we want to do and then like, we get like, this one little thing and then it devolves into like, you know, ten or fifteen minutes of, or fifteen or twenty minutes of an argument about Robert's rules and who's doing what and, you know, maybe if there were issues or there are issues around this particular resolution that we should take the time to consider that information ahead of this. So understand what everyone's concerns are before we get here. And you know, perhaps make the necessary adjustments. So by the time it's on our agenda, you know, we're dealing with things in kind of a clear-cut way.
I would gladly rescind my motion in an effort to make that happen, to support that approach.
Well, thank you, Allison. Is there, i- i- and is that all it takes?
You, Chair, you can do what you want to do.
No, I, I, I want to make.
I don't think anyone seconded it, so it should be all it takes.
Second.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so we're back to the original three, four motions.
Right. And what I would suggest at this point is, you know, like, I don't believe that, you know, you know, it's all gonna come crumbling down if we don't vote on it today, right? Like, let's get this clear about the four items in this resolution. Understand, you know, maybe if it's one resolution or two and what that all means. So then when it's on our agenda, you know, we're all moving forward in a, in a, you know, a deliberate kind of way. So I would ask i- if there is a motion to table this item while we get that straightened out. Yes, Donald?
I guess the, the only question that I had to that, Tom, I actually agree, but the only question, this motion and this resolution, does it prevent us from conducting any business currently?
Today?
Yes, so.
If we don't do anything right now.
Yes, so the next Audit Committee meeting is scheduled for April nineteenth. And as it stands, we will not have a chair for, you know, so we can't have that meeting.
Well, we do have a chair. I, I was, I agreed to serve as chair.
Yeah, for that, for the last meeting, right? So we were supposed to elect a new one at the next meeting. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so if number one is not cleared up, then.
We're gonna be in the same situation at this upcoming meeting because I agreed to serve for that meeting. So you're, well, yep, yep.
I guess.
I mean, we could try to, we could try to have another election, see what happens at that meeting, but.
Well, I think that's my question. Are there, it, what's in place already, right? Like, if we don't vote on this today, it's not like we don't have anything to work with, right?
I mean, it depends on, it depends on Mr. Faulkner.
I mean, this, this, this was discussed at another meeting and I think, I think the reason why Greg put in his motion as unanimous and I seconded it is because we thought it was non-controversial. This, we thought this was, this had been discussed at previous meetings. So there was no desire to push this through.
But the reason it was tabled on the last meeting is most members weren't there by the time we considered it. So we didn't even get, this is the first time that the majority would be considering it and discussing it.
Understood.
And I will say some of these same concerns were raised at that meeting. And then we, and then we set a table it. Because as Cherie said, not enough members were there. So it's, you know, it is worthy of more conversation.
Okay, Effie, I see your hand up.
Uh, yes, just to remind you, I said Donald and then Effie and I think eight people spoke to. So I, I have what I hope is a compromise. If we can maybe change the language to say that the chair may stay temporarily until someone else is willing to step up to replace that chair, maybe that resolves all the problem. So if we have someone else that changes, and if not temporarily, the chair continues until we have someone stepping up to take over. And I also want to remind people that the PEP is about fifty percent bigger now than it was a year ago. So maybe what was historically an issue will no longer be such a difficulty going forward.
Yep. True.
All right, so.
No one seconded your original motion, Tom.
Right.
Point of clarification, what is the motion on the floor at the moment?
The motion on the floor at the moment was for us to table this item so that we can get all the details worked out and, and, you know, do it in a deliberative way. I mean, I'm kind of rambling about what it is, but the motion itself was to table the item.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Allison. Oh. So Allison, did you, I didn't. Allison made the motion.
Oh, I made, sorry.
Because I can't make a motion as the chair.
I made the motion to table. Yes, I did. I'm sorry.
And, and we need a second.
I'll, I'll second Allison's motion.
Thank you, Tony.
Sure.
All those in favor of tabling?
Can we do this as a roll call?
Sure.
I, I, are, are we gonna have any discussion on, on table on it? Chair, I just, my only question, from what I'm hearing on my question of the business not being able to be done, is we don't have an official position because Greg only. the business not being able to be done is we don't have an official position because Greg only said that he would replace or sit in that chair for one meeting. So that would still leave us without a chair for the next audit committee meeting. And I, I, I think that's the concern for me. I don't have a problem with table on it, but if we don't have anything in place.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask Alex. I have a quick question, right? And, and I guess this is a rules thing. Um, under Roberts rules, can a, can a group, you know, um, choose to have someone, uh, chair a meeting for that meeting?
Well, this is really a question of the, of the bylaws or the charter of the committee itself, right? And so in this case, the charter doesn't give that much flexibility. That said, at the end of the day, you have to get the meeting to happen, right? Um, so I would say that some flexibility is in order as long as the committee agrees to it. Right? Because there's a, there's a kind of rule of necessity there.
Thank you. We'll just do what we did before. They'll elect somebody temporarily.
We can, yes. Certainly, I would not have any objection to that. That, that definitely can be done.
Okay. So there is a motion and seconded it on the table to, um, you know, table, uh, calendar item number 18. Um, and, uh,
I requested a roll call.
Yeah, you, you requested roll call and, um, I think we were taking some discussion on it because Donald, uh, made a comment and Alex explained it, right? So, um, at this point, um, could we please have a roll call vote on, uh, tabling this item? Alex, could you, uh, please call the roll?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely, Chair. Uh, Phoebe Shaday-Arnold?
I agree to table.
Thank you. Tazee Nizad?
To table.
Um, uh, Chantel Cabrera? Hmm, I think has left the meeting. Janil Chacon?
I abstain.
Uh, Marjorie Deanstag?
Abstain.
Thank you. Uh, Greg Faulkner?
No one to motion to table.
Thank you. Cherie Gibson?
Oppose the motion.
Thank you. Anthony Giordano?
Good abstain.
Thank you. Uh, Angela Green?
Yes, to table.
Thank you. Alison Hirsch?
Yes, to table.
Thank you. Jessamyn Lee?
I abstain.
Thank you. Uh, John Maderick?
I abstain.
Donald Nesbit? Don, can you hear us?
I can. I was having some difficulty. Uh, yes, to table.
Thank you. Alan Ong?
Yes, to table.
Thank you. Uh, Kaleris Salas Ramirez?
Yes, to table.
Thank you. Uh, Mahisha Sap?
Table.
Thank you. Uh, Karina Pollen?
Abstain.
Thank you. Thomas Shepherd?
Yes, to table.
Thank you. And, uh, Efrem Zakri?
Oh, to table.
Okay, thank you. I see 10 votes to table, including an employee trustee chair.
Thank you. So, okay, so does that mean in this case that the motion carried, right?
Yes, true.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, can we in, under new business, um, select or ask for a recommendation for, again, for the next meeting, a temporary chair of the audit committee for the next meeting so we can continue business?
I, I don't think that requires action by the board itself. I think that should be within the committee's authority.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, thank you. Um, so the next item on the agenda is calendar item 19. Election of an alternate member of the audit committee. May I have a motion to consider, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And may I have a second, please?
Janil, second.
Thank you, Janil.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we are looking for a trustee to serve as an alternate on the audit committee. Ade, can you please tell us about the audit committee's responsibilities?
Yes, so the purpose of the audit committee is to assist the board in providing oversight of Berzer's governance, governance, uh, risk management and controls. Um, so meetings of the audit committee are usually held once a quarter and run between an hour to an hour and a half. And at those meetings, the committee will usually discuss, um, audits that were completed uh, since the last meeting of the committee and also receive an update on the remediation status of prior audit findings. And then once a year, the committee will discuss the annual risk assessment and vote on approving the internal audit plan. The term of a member is two years, but the person elected today will serve until December 2023, which is, um, the remainder of the term of the individual being replaced. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to make sure I got it correct in my head. Who are the current members of the audit committee and current alternates?
I'm a, I know I'm a member. I think you're a member also, right, Chair?
That's correct. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the, um, the, the vote today would be for my alternate.
Yes.
I'd be happy to be your alternate, Tom.
All right, so, um, okay, so, so are there any nominations, uh?
Tony just volunteered.
Yep, so I got Tony and, uh, I see Tazee.
I also would like to.
Okay, and I see Effie. All right, so Tony, Tazee, and Effie. All right, so, um, this is going to be, uh, this has to be a roll call vote because you have three people. Um, so, um, or let me do this, uh, okay, no, no, no. Um, is there anything that any of the nominees would like to, um, uh, say in advance, uh, to, um, you know, for why they would, um, uh, be, you know, a good, why they want to be a member of the audit committee? So, um, let's do like a minute apiece, I guess. Uh, Tony?
Uh, yeah, I'd be happy to serve, uh, as a, as an alternate for, for you, Tom, uh, because I expect you to be at those meetings. And, uh, I won't have to do too much work. No, in all seriousness, I, uh, I have a financial services background. I understand audits. I understand how these things work and I try to be very vigilant in terms of, uh, being at, being at these meetings and making myself knowledgeable about the events that are occurring. So I'd be proud to serve you guys and happy to uh, to, uh, to, to work in that capacity.
Thank you, Tony. So next, uh, is Tazee.
This is interesting. Um, first and foremost, I think, um, I am very perceptive to nuance, uh, that sometimes auditing um, requires and sort of being able to read between the lines and then extrapolate um, what that means for membership and then for us as a board and, um, as a group of trustees also. Um, and then finally, I think I have a good, um, working relationship with you, Tom, that, um, we could establish some type of communication when we are there at the meeting, but then when we are not with each other also. So, um, given that, and then I'm, I'm superbly interested in these, um, in the fiduciary acting of our trustees and are fresh off of a training, I would say. So, um, yeah, I would be excited to be your alternate.
Thank you, Tazee. Um, next is Effie.
Um, hi, um, I have decades of finance experience, a lot of accounting, um, experience, reading financial statements, balance sheets, being involved in certain audits. Um, and I think for this position, I think it's important to have experience, understanding audits and accounting and financial, finance in general. This is a pension fund. Um, that, that's really the, the, the thing I would accentuate the most is that I have experience in this area. I've been doing it professionally for many, many years and I think it would be good for the uh, trustees here to benefit from my experience in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, Alex, um, so this is going to be a, um, uh, roll call vote. Um, when your name is called, please indicate, um, who you would like, um, to, or, you know, who your choice is to serve as, uh, my alternate on the audit committee. Um, Alex, could you please, um, could you please call a roll?
Certainly, Chair. Uh, Phoebe Shaday-Arnold?
Tony.
Thank you. Tazee Nizad?
Myself.
Thank you. Janil Chacon?
Tazee.
Thank you. Marjorie Deanstag? Thank you. Uh, Gregory Faulkner?
Tony.
Thank you. Cherie Gibson?
Tazee Nizad.
Thank you. Anthony Giordano?
With tremendous respect for Effie and Tazee, I vote for myself.
Thank you. Angela Green?
Tony.
Thank you. Alison Hirsch?
Effie.
Thank you. Uh, Jessamyn Lee?
Tazee Nizad.
Thank you. John Maderick?
I'd go for Tony.
Thank you. Donald Nesbit?
Nick.
Thank you. Alan Ong?
Tony.
Thank you. Kaleris Salas Ramirez?
Trustee Assad.
Thank you. Mahisha Sap?
Then disrespect, but this one's for Tony.
Thank you. Karina Pollen? I think we've lost her. Um, Tom Shepherd?
Tazee.
Thank you. Uh, Efrem Zakri? Effie, would you like to cast your vote, please? If, uh, Effie, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna cast my vote for Tony. Um, it's pretty clear that my experience is not that valued.
Okay, thank you. One, two.
Alex, I think Russell Buckley can vote for, uh,
Is Russ still here?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes, I am still here.
I'm sorry, Russ.
No, no, no. No apologies necessary. I will abstain from the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chair, I am counting, uh, nine.
For Tony.
Nine for Tony.
One, two, three, four, seven for Tazee, one for Effie and one abstention.
That's exactly what I, that, that's exactly my account, Chair. Thank you.
All right. So congratulations, Tony.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so the next agenda item is calendar item 20. Authorization of the Comptroller of the City of New York to invest, sell and exchange the funds of the retirement system. May I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. And may I have a second, please?
Marjorie.
Thank you, Marjorie. Antonio, can you please tell us about this resolution?
Absolutely. This resolution is the quarterly authorization to the Comptroller of the City of New York to invest the funds of the Board of Education Retirement System and implement the decisions of the Board of Trustees. This austere, authorization extends until June 30th, 2023, and we recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Antonio. Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Donald?
I do have a question before casting my vote on this. Uh, where are we at on first and tier?
I, um, I'll just say that it is not implemented as of today. That's all it says.
Um, I will ask, uh, that, well, uh, more than ask, this was a motion that was actually passed by this board May of 2022. No execution has happened on first and tier, and I don't think that any of us have the authority to hold up an action that the board has said yes to. I mean, so I will push, uh, for the Comptroller's Office, the Bureau of Asset Management, um, to execute um, the resolution that we passed as the Board of Trustees, uh, May 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. So, uh,
That a motion?
Well, the, no, that was, no, uh,
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, the, the, the motion is to, um, authorize the Comptroller of the City of New York to invest, sell and exchange the funds of the retirement system. So, um, this is one, uh, given its gravity, um, that I am going to, um, request a roll call vote for.
I have a question. Um, is there a report from, from the Comptroller's representative regarding this investment and where we are? For first and tier?
Um, so there was nobody from the investment side of Bureau of Asset Management who, um, asked to be on this call other than John Adler on the net zero proposal. So, no, but my understanding, um, I actually don't want to speak about my understanding because I don't, uh, want to say anything, anything inaccurate.
The point of information, Chair?
Yes.
Can the comments that were just made by Donald Nesbit, could that be incorporated as an, as an amendment to this? That while we're authorizing the controller to move forward, but that we also want that the investment that we have previously voted on be enacted or be implemented? Is that something that we can legally do? Would that work with somebody, maybe Tony, parliamentally? Can we do that?
You know,
Maybe Alex?
Hang on one second. I, y'all making me short circuit today. I mean, um, you know, like, I, I, there's a part of me, and I think I'm gonna kind of make a little comment here, right? Like, there's a part of me that I think we have to, like, I very much, um, understand and align, um, uh, with Donald's concern, right? And the question is, you know, is it appropriate, you know, You know, and, and I'm struggling with that. Is it appropriate to authorize the Comptroller to sell, invest? And exchange funds of the retirement system when he won't do it with first and tier, right? And I think that's a question that you need to answer when you vote. So instead of adding a whole bunch of conditions to a simple resolution. You know, I think we need to like really consider those things when we vote and, and. You know, I, I think that's just my position on it.
Yeah. No, I hear, I hear you.
I can just say one thing on that. Just all I want to say is that. You know, just in general, this, this resolution. In and of itself is critically important in the sense that you do have to, you know, from a. The ability to enact any resolutions that the executive committee or the Board of Trustees pass. Must come from, from the passing of this resolution, just as a, as one.
Yeah, and I also want to just add also. You know, for the sake of fairness, right, that, you know. The investment team here did recommend that we approve it, right? So there's, there's a concern, and I share that concern. And then there's, I have to weigh that against, you know, Antonio saying that the. You know, the, the investment team recommends that we approve it. So again, I, I still think that we are in a place where we're gonna have to consider all of the factors. When we vote yea, nay, or abstain. And I'm, I'm willing to just kind of run with that. I also see Donald's hand up again, and I see Russell's hand.
Yes, I, I am going to say this. So I will be voting yes on this. But I am concerned with no action being done or something that the Board of Trustees. Have, have passed. That is concerning. And there needs to be a level of accountability, the same way there's a level of accountability of us as trustees. There should be a level of accountability at the Comptroller's Office. If, if the saying is that we as trustees instruct the Borough of Asset Management or the Comptroller. To move on certain things that we would like move, then the question becomes, why hasn't this been moved on in almost a year? Right? So I, I have this concern there. And, and so that's why, for me, it's, it's concerning, and I'm going to voice that. But, but I am going to respectfully respect Antonio and his team and recommend that we vote yes on this. But this is certainly a concern for me.
Thank you, Donald. Russell, you're up, then Greg, then Tony.
Thank you, Chair Shepard. I just wanted to ask a quick point of clarification for my own. Edification, understanding. My understanding of the Comptroller's role. And this authorization is. Maybe a little bit of a formality and standard procedure. I understand, my understanding is the Comptroller's role as custodian is statutory, and I guess I just wanted to understand. Given the conversation that I've heard here, some consideration of not. Moving forward with this, and I just needed to understand if there was an alternate path forward without this resolution or. What might happen if this resolution were to be voted down? Just wanted to understand.
There are certainly veterans on this call. You know, John, probably Dorsey's probably been here the longest out of anybody. I'll say that essentially this, you know. And this gets kind of clear, right? Where do we, essentially, can we act, right? Like, there's no, there are no other alternatives, right? Just be frank about that, right? There are no other alternatives. To, it would essentially, because directly every action when it comes to investments or a statutory perspective rests with the board, right? And so, but the board does not, as it's currently constructed, have. The ability to make actions on anything, right? So like rebalancing, for instance, right? I think the interpretation of this would be that, you know, if you were to buy and sell any security, right, have to come back to the board for approval. So that's, that's my kind of interpretation both from this, but you know, certainly we have other veterans on this call who have been around the systems longer. But from my understanding, there would be no alternative as of, as of yet.
Thank you, Antonio. Greg?
Yeah, I just want to kind of, you know, support what you just said, you know, Mr. Chair, and that, you know, this is a struggle because. I, I think from a heart standpoint, we want to vote a particular way. But based on what Donald has said, that, you know, we need to, you know, maybe put that aside, but at the same time, we want to send a message. That we are not happy with, you know, not following through on the investments that this board has voted on. And I was trying to find a way that we could, you know, do what we need to do, you know, respecting that our team is actually advising us to do this. And vote to, to authorize that continuation. But also send a message that we are, as a board, not happy with the failure to move on those things that we've asked the Comptroller to do in the past. And so I'm hoping that we can find a way. Maybe that's a separate motion or separate resolution. Expressing our concern about the failure to move on the things that we've asked the Comptroller to do.
I'm gonna just say very quickly, Greg, I think you did it nicely, right? Because if these meetings are recorded for public consumption, then you. You just did, and I, I think that. We do need to have us a serious conversation along the way about how this is all working out. So I'm with you.
I'd like to formalize that into a, into a, to a message coming from the full board, a vote of some kind. Expressing our displeasure and surprise that, that these investments have not moved forward.
Okay, yeah, I think. You know, rather than doing it in a haphazard kind of way, I would, I would suggest. You know, us being deliberate about what that all looks like. So, you know, I would not be in favor of doing it like right here, right now.
Okay, that's fine.
Tony?
Point of, point of clarification. If, if this, if this motion was, if this resolution was tabled until the next meeting. What would be the ramifications on? Action for next month?
Essentially, and I think this is up to interpretation, but from my understanding. Literally could not take any other actions with regard to the implementation of, of our investment program.
I guess my question would be to that, Antonio. When does the current authorization end?
End of this month.
Okay.
When is the executive board meet again?
April 20th.
Okay, that's far away.
All right, so. I do think now would be a, a good time to vote. So. All those in favor of approving calendar item 20. Authorization of the Comptroller of the City of New York to invest, sell and exchange the funds of the retirement system. Please indicate your approval. Tom?
I.
I agree.
Donald, I.
Hi, Cherie.
Hi, Allison. Hi, Justin.
Abstain, Tony.
Okay, are there any opposed?
Marjorie.
Okay, and Marjorie is opposed.
Chair, Chair, can I change my vote? I'm abstaining also.
Okay. So. Alex, how many members do we have present? Or how many trustees do we have present?
I thought you were gonna call for abstentions also. I'm abstaining, just to be clear.
Yes. Thank you. I thought I did call for abstention.
I, I butted it. It was my fault.
Sorry about that, Tony. Sorry about that.
Okay, guys, dinner is, I can't put it on the table if there's no room on the table.
Chair, I believe we have eighteen members.
All right, hang on, there's a lot going on at the same time. Say that again, Alex.
Chair, I believe we have eighteen members here, but well.
No dinner, just motions.
I, I, I believe we have.
So that would be fourteen, one no, and three abstentions.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So the next item on the agenda is calendar item number 21. Authorization to commence an asset allocation study. May I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Cherie. Antonio, could you please tell us about this resolution?
Absolutely. The Burris Investments Policy Statement requires periodic reviews of the strategic asset allocation. As well as proposed timeline for completion. Asset allocation is the board's decision to develop target weights to stocks, bonds, and alternative strategies. That in combination will best achieve planned return and funded ratio goals over the next three to five years. The proposed timeline will include discussions on asset classes and capital market expectations. A review of liabilities and cash flows, a discussion on benchmarking, rebalancing, and alternative asset commitment pacing. Burris and your consultants, Segal Marco Advisors, have already been, been in touch with the Bureau of Asset Management on scheduling the first meeting. We're hoping to have the first meeting at the next executive committee session on April, Thursday, April 20th. We would love as many board members to attend. And as a reminder, the board has ultimate priority over asset allocation, and the goal is to have a new strategic asset allocation. Hopefully by, by or close to the end of the fiscal year. Happy to answer any questions, but we recommend that we commence the asset allocation study immediately.
Thank you, Antonio. Are there any questions from the board? Hey, Greg, I see your hand up.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'll take it down.
Okay.
My, Tony.
Yes, go ahead, Tony, sorry.
Antonio, we have, we have, I think, an analysis coming from an outside consultant on, on. On weights, right, on allocation weights. Will that study be done before our, before our, our asset allocation modeling is?
So let me clarify. So that's actually not going to be on weights. That's going to be more on implementation. So that's a separate study. How it's going to work now, so we've been in contact with the Bureau of Asset Management. Some of the other systems have already voted to, to, to commence their asset allocation studies. Your, your general consultant, Segal Marco Advisors, has developed their, developed their new capital market expectations. In addition, Lil Metta is also developing capital market expectations. Also, thanks to Merrick and the team at the City's Actuary, also have a model that looked at the co-movement of assets, liabilities, and contributions. So there's a ton of, I think. A analysis being done, but however, you know, ultimately it is your decision where to go. So I think. I think the first sessions will discuss asset, kind of the general asset classes, capital market expectations. And kind of our general goals. We'll get an overview of what our overall goal is, we're seven percent returns. Some of the unique characteristics of Burr's portfolio, given the, the fixed TDA. But, so that, that'll be kind of the first session. Ultimately, what we'll do is give you candidate portfolios to, to choose from. And like I said, we, we are hoping to talk with the Bureau in the next, the first week of April to talk about the, the calendar. And where the other systems are at. But yeah, so that, that is, you know, the, the other analysis is separate and more for portfolio implementation.
Well, I think as, as trustees, this is one of the most important things that we will do as, as Burr's trustees. And I fully support going ahead with the asset allocation study.
Thank you, Tony. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Let's vote. So all in favor of approving calendar item 21. Authorization to commence an asset allocation study, please indicate your approval. I, Tom.
Hi, Phoebe.
Hi, Justin.
Hi, Janil.
Hi, Effie.
Thank you. Okay, are there any opposed? And are there any abstentions? Thank you. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is calendar item 22. Approval of the Net Zero Implementation Plan. May I have a motion to consider?
So moved, Donald Nesbit.
Thank you, Donald, and may I have a second, please?
Second to Tony.
Thank you, Tony. All right, Antonio, could you please tell us about this resolution?
Absolutely. The Burris Board of Trustees approved the Net Zero Climate Action Plan in fiscal year 2021. That set, sorry, fiscal year 2020, yeah, 2020, that set an aspirational goal to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions in the portfolio by 24. And sorry, fiscal year 2022, excuse me. As part of the action plan, the board required the Bureau of Asset Management to develop an implementation strategy should prudently achieve the 2040 goal. We have with us today John Adler, Chief ESG Officer for the Bureau of Asset Management, who will present the proposed Net Zero Implementation Plan. For a consideration and approval. This is a shortened version of the plan that was. That was presented to the executive committee at our last meeting. So John knows been a, a while, but here we are. Turn it over to you.
I'm gonna try to share my screen.
Hey, John, I could barely hear you.
You can barely, okay, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, apologies. I'm trying to share my screen. Can you tell me if you can see my screen?
It says starting to, yep, there we go. Got it.
Okay, so let me make that whole screen. Okay, so I'm gonna try to run through this quickly because I know you guys have been here for a long time. As Antonio said, in October of 2021, the Burris Board. Set an aspirational goal to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2040 across your investment portfolio. And at that time, you adopted the Net Zero Asset Owner Commitment of the Paris Align Investment Initiative. And you adopted a preliminary climate action plan that requires the development of this net zero implementation plan in a year. We've taken more than a year to try to get it right. By the way, this plan should be, the full plan, not this deck. But the full plan should be in your portal, wherever you have your official documents, and we sent it in January. So it's pretty much that plan. This is just a summary of it. So the goal of this plan is to decarbonize the market, not just the Burr's portfolio. To keep fossil fuels in the ground, consistent with your fiduciary duties. And we all recognize that we can't do this alone. It requires collective action by governments, regulators, companies, and investors. In all sectors, but particularly the ones that are listed here to keep global temperature rise well below two degrees centigrade. And I imagine that most of you saw the reports that came out yesterday of the latest report of the. IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, that basically says that. Climate conditions are getting more dire than ever, and more forceful action is necessary. If we are going to keep climate change well below two degrees centigrade. So the overview of the plan, it has four main buckets, disclosure, investment in climate change solutions, engagement. And, and divestment. And let me try to go through this again quickly. So starting with disclosure. We will annually measure and report scopes one, two, and three. Public portfolio emissions and the progress of the plan. The emissions reduction targets that we're proposing that you adopt are 22%. By 2025 and 49% by 2030 for scopes one and two. That is compared to a 2019 benchmark. And that you set targets for scope three by 2025. We don't have enough data yet. To set reliable targets for scope three. And that this is for public markets, that we also develop interim portfolio emissions reduction targets for private markets when we get that data. And we come back to you with those proposals. For those of you who may not be totally familiar with scopes one, two, and three. This slide gives a basic explanation. Scope one is a company's direct emissions from the company's own facilities and vehicles. Scope two is the emissions that come from the electricity that a company purchases. And scope three, which is the largest amount of emissions, is the, are the indirect emissions, both upstream. So that's on the left, and that is from things like supply chains. And, you know, the goods and services that a company purchases. And then downstream are generally. And then downstream are generally from the consumption of the company's goods and services. So if you think about auto manufacturing, upstream scope three would be things like the steel and rubber and computer chips and so on that go into making the car. And then downstream is going to be the emissions that come from the car when you're driving it, for example, okay? So this is a graphic representation of those emissions targets that I mentioned. From the end of twenty nineteen until June thirtieth of last year, your emissions went down by approximately sixteen and a third percent. The goal would be to bring that further down to by approximately twenty-two percent, again, from that baseline of twenty nineteen, by twenty twenty-five, and then by forty-nine percent by twenty thirty. And of course, your goal, net zero by twenty forty, would take it down to zero by twenty forty. Okay, I'm going to move on from disclosure to engagement. So the focus here is on getting your portfolio companies to adopt science-based targets. Science-based targets are targets for greenhouse gas emissions reductions based on the latest climate science that puts the company on a one-point-five-degree pathway. That is that if the company's emissions would be consistent with what would be necessary to keep global warming to one-point-five degrees. So the goal is to get seventy percent of your portfolio's emissions to be covered by science-based targets for scopes one and two by twenty twenty-five. And ninety percent of your portfolio's emissions to be covered by scopes one, two, and three by science-based targets by twenty thirty. Currently, sixteen percent of your portfolio's scopes one and two emissions, currently as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, are covered by science-based targets. And to get to seventy percent would require an additional sixty-six companies to adopt science-based targets. So the way to think about this is that your emissions are concentrated in a relatively small number of companies. The highest emitting companies emit most of the emissions in the portfolio. So the idea is to focus engagement on those highest emitting companies in the highest emitting sectors. And so that would be the focus of the engagement, right? In addition, we want your managers to play a role by agreeing to have net zero goals or science-based targets and plans by twenty twenty-five. So we would communicate to all of your managers upon your adoption of this plan that you've set these goals and the expectation is that by twenty twenty-five, they will adopt science-based plans, science-based targets, or and/or net zero goals. And then on the just transition, our goal is to come back to you by the end of this year with an assessment of how we can contribute to the just transition. The just transition is the idea that the energy transition be fair to historically disadvantaged communities, countries, and workers, so that the transition from a fossil fuel-based economy to a low or zero-carbon economy not come at the expense of workers, disadvantaged communities, and, you know, historically disadvantaged countries. Okay, I'm going to move on to the more detail on the work with the managers. As I said, we want to get all the managers to have net zero goals or science-based targets and an implementation plan by twenty twenty-five. This would be consistent with fiduciary duty. The whole plan will be consistent with fiduciary duty. That comes first and foremost. We want managers to cover scopes one and two and material scope three emissions. If the data is inadequate for scope three, like ours is right now, they would develop a plan for that. And then for, for private markets, general partners, we want them to have their control investments adopt science-based targets during the holding period if they're not willing to set a net zero goal. Because for most of those managers, the companies they own today are not the companies they're going to be owning in twenty forty or twenty fifty, right, because those are limited-duration investment vehicles. This is what BAM commits to do. We want to develop a proposal for non-control investments in consultation with the managers, right? So some private markets investments, the manager doesn't have control over the company. So what do they do in that case? We want to develop a proposal for that. We will review the proxy voting records of all of the public markets managers. We'll provide reports to you, an interim report in twenty twenty-three on the managers, and an in-depth progress report in twenty twenty-four. And then in twenty twenty-five, for managers that don't agree to do this, that don't set targets or plans, we will come back to you and say, okay, here's the managers that are not doing it. You guys have to make a decision about what, if anything, you want to do with. Okay. Climate Change Solutions, this slide, there's nothing new on this slide. Those goals were set in that twenty twenty-one plan. So your goal by twenty thirty-five is to have one-point-eight billion dollars of your portfolio invested in climate change solutions, which would be fourteen-point-four percent. At that time, you set a twenty twenty-five goal of four hundred million dollars, which is, would be four-point-four percent. And your current, that is as of Q two twenty twenty-two, we don't have the year-end data yet for climate solutions, is two-hundred-one million dollars, which is two-point-six percent of your total assets. And then in terms of exclusions, two things here. One is that the, the plan is to, consistent with your fossil fuel divestment resolution that you passed in twenty twenty-one, ask all private markets managers to exclude exploration, extraction, and production of oil, gas, and thermal coal, or provide opt-out for you of such investments. Then if the manager does not agree to that, then you would decide on what to do, you know, consistent with your view of your fiduciary duty. Our understanding, oh, sorry, from speaking with managers informally, is that basically managers have moved out of this space because it's been too volatile, private markets managers. So we don't think this is going to be a huge ask. And then sort of as I already alluded to, if managers or publicly traded companies fail to comply with the parameters that we're setting out here, then you exclusively, you, the board, may consider potential actions as to what to do, including, up to and including exclusion, again, consistent with fiduciary standards. Okay, so that's my presentation, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you, John. I think I'm going to start with a question. So if we, if we did this back in, or this was our, what we decided back in, like, twenty twenty-one, right? And there was supposed to be, we were supposed to have a plan, like, they're supposed to take a year to do this.
Yes.
And, you know, it was, well, we took longer to year because we want to get it right. I guess my question here is, one, like, what accounted for the delay, right? And, two, I think for me, and I'm going to say this more as a statement, right? Because it, toward the end there, it was, well, we're going to ask private managers to not make these kinds of investments, and then make a decision if they don't comply, right? You know, because I'm thinking about this, if you have, do private managers only invest in private? Like, do, do they sometimes, or are parts of their investment portfolios in public companies or publicly traded companies? And I guess the reason why I'm asking that, because I'm sitting here thinking right now about Alaska, right? And, you know, the fact that you have, like, ConocoPhillips, you know, getting ready to, like, go all in as part of this Willow Oil Project, right? And it's not just ConocoPhillips, right? So there's ConocoPhillips, and then there's all the companies that are connected to that, you know, to basically go in and, like, in my opinion, devastate part of Alaska, right? And so my question becomes, in all of that, like, what in this plan has a mechanism in place? Not necessarily to sanction, but to say that we are not willing to invest both in, let's say, ConocoPhillips, but also in the companies connected with ConocoPhillips that are contributing to that action. Like, I'm, I'm trying to see what in this plan allows us to stay true to our goal.
Okay, so you asked a couple of questions. One is about the delay. One is about private markets and public investments. And then one is about the sort of ConocoPhillips and the companies connected to them that might be.
And I was just an example.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let me try to address them as well as I can. First of all, on the delay. In October of last year, we had a meeting for trustees from across the three funds that adopted the net zero plan. I think, Tom, you were on it, but I'm not
Yeah, I was.
100% sure.
Yeah, I was.
And that took about an hour and a half, and Brad Lander was on it as, as well as me and, and members of my team. And what we said at that meeting was that, we basically said, we're still, we asked you guys questions about the direction of the plan, and, and you gave us direction. And then this plan reflects those, those comments that you gave us. And we said at the time that we wanted to get it right. And so that's why we were taking more time. We kind of more or less asked permission of the trustee. It wasn't formal, it was informal. And we did bring you the plan. We, we submitted it at the beginning of January. So now we're in March, because if I'm remembering correctly, this was dealt with at last month's executive committee meeting, February. And then, but the rule was, I don't, I don't remember the actual rationale for why this needed to come to the full board. I think it's because it adjusted investment policy statement or something like that, that the full board needed to act on it, not just the executive committee. But the reason that it, we didn't get it to you until January was because we had this meeting with you in October. You gave us some direction, and, you know, we took that into account. I will also just tell you candidly, I, I took, I took this job with the controller's office at the beginning of last year, and really from day one, started working on this implementation plan. And the controller really pushed it, pushed to make it as detailed and comprehensive as possible. Because he wants us to, I think, in the spirit of the questions and statements you just made, Tom, really be an exemplar for how a net zero plan can be effective, you know? So that's why we took more time. You know, that, that's, that's the only explanation I can give you on that.
No, thank you. And I'm not saying it, like, to put you on a spot or put you, you know,
I don't mind, I don't mind, Tom.
Place blame or anything, right? You know, sometimes we get better results when we take our time. So I'm not, like, faulting. I was just, you know, just wanting to kind of, like, share with us, like, what that was all about. Donald, I see your hand up.
Questions.
Yes.
Okay, so in terms of private markets and public investments, so some of our private markets managers do make investments in public companies primarily on the debt side, right? So, you know, we have, you guys actually have a fairly new allocation to alternative credit. And sometimes, some public companies do, you know, have investments, private credit investments in the public companies. But for the most part, most of your private markets allocation is to non-publicly traded companies. And so, look, the language on the upstream exclusion is, you know, I, I, I use the word ask, we can use the word demand, they're kind of interchangeable. We're basically saying, prospectively, we are not going to invest in upstream oil and gas exploration. And if, if a fund, let's say there's a private equity fund, you know, I don't want to name a name, let's just say XYZ Private Equity Fund comes here, and they have not agreed to either give us opt-out rights or to not invest in upstream oil and gas, then you're going to, the board is going to be informed and say, okay, here's an investment from a risk-return perspective. It is, you know, strong, it's good, but they're not agreeing to the prohibition on upstream oil and gas. You guys have to decide whether you want to make the investment anyway, or whether you don't want that in your portfolio. That's the way we're saying it.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
On the ConocoPhillips.
Yeah, go ahead.
ConocoPhillips, you know, we did this fossil fuel reserve owner divestment and approved it in twenty twenty-one, mostly carried it out at Burris in twenty twenty-one. I believe, but I'm not 100% sure that ConocoPhillips is on that list, on that divestment list. Now, all the other companies that do the subcontracting and so on, we, our divestment has only focused on fossil fuel reserve owners. Could the board at some point say, you want to divest or examine or explore divestment in other parts of the fossil fuel value chain? For example, oilfield services, or transportation, or refining, or what have you? Absolutely, you could. That has not been the thrust so far. And let me just say, the net zero plan is really not a divestment plan. It's primarily an engagement plan. You did a big divestment. Now, this plan is really about engaging with portfolio companies and with our managers to get them to take concrete steps to lower greenhouse gas emissions. That's what this is really focused on.
Thank you very much. Hey, Donald, you're up, and then Effie. Oh, I'm sorry, Tony, I see your hand. Where's your hand up?
Yeah, I was up for Donald.
All right, go ahead, Tony, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the initiative and, and what it means. But I, I had asked, I think, at the last presentation a question about what the direct impact on, on our portfolio would be.
Yes.
In the short term, do we, I don't think we had the numbers at that time. Do we have them now?
When you say the direct impact, you mean of the divestment or of this net zero plan?
Of the divestment.
We do not, I do not believe that we have an attribution analysis that shows, but maybe Antonio does. So you're coming on, Antonio, so.
No, no, I was just going to say, Tony, I can get that for you in short order.
Okay.
And, and that'll be, now, be clear, that's on the equity side, right? Again, it's a lot easier to do, the, the debt side's a little harder, you know, but certainly.
Talking about private markets.
Oh, private markets?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, yeah, overall, right? The net zero, we're talking about the private market. This, this resolution is.
Private and public. This is private and public, Tony.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's no divestment in this resolution.
I understand.
Right, we're not asking you to vote to divest in anything in this. You guys voted to divest.
This is just to approve the plan.
Right, I just want to, I'm just curious about what 100% implementation by the managers at this stage of the game, you know, just in terms of the data, to, you know, moving forward.
Okay, okay, so Donald, you're up.
Yeah, I was going to say, to Tony's point, though, I believe, even though when I asked him about divestment, it can have a financial impact, right, when we ask the managers to do this. I guess my question would be, have we evaluated that? Have we looked at the financial impact it could have to the fund as a fiduciary? There's a moral compass that we have, and D C thirty-seven has been a leader in this. And I'm still a part of several groups on climate justice. I just would like to know, have we done an analysis of that?
Well, I, I guess my answer, my short answer is no. Well, I, I guess my answer, my short answer is no. Because we, this, we do not believe that this plan will result in any changes to your manager lineup. And, and we actually had a conversation with the BRRRRS staff. Cause there's an upcoming public market search for developed equity managers. And we don't believe that adopting this plan will have any impact on the composition of your managers, at least in the short run. In the long run, if there are managers who don't agree to, you know, get aligned, then you may decide to change that lineup. But at the moment, there shouldn't be any change. And again, the idea behind this plan is not for us to divest and not for managers to divest. It's for managers to use their influence with the companies in their portfolio to, to, you know, influence them to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. This is all about seeking to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the real world. Not just portfolio decarbonization, but in the real world. So if there's a financial impact, we expect it to be positive. Because reducing climate change will have a long-term positive financial impact. But we wouldn't anticipate any short-term positive or negative impact on risk-adjusted returns.
Right. Yes, Sean. And we'd be 100% certain on that.
We can't be 100% certain on anything. And anybody, anybody who comes in here and says, I can give you 100% certainty that this is what's going to happen. If you do that, I would kick them right off the Zoom, off the Webex. So the answer is no.
I guess for me, Tom, and I apologize for that. But I guess at this point, I, I just wanna, I wanna, I would like to make a motion to table this into the next meeting. As I, I want a moment to look at the entire plan. The summary, everything seems okay. But I would just like to evaluate the entire plan.
I second the motion.
So I have a motion to table the approval of the net zero implementation plan by Donald and a second by Greg, it was?
Yeah, Greg.
Thank you.
For the reasons stated by Donald, I think those are important considerations.
Thank you.
Effie had a comment before.
Yeah. Go ahead, Effie. I'm sorry.
All right. Let, let, let me just, I don't know what to say for a little bit of maybe cold water on, on, on the trustees here. A month, even a year is not going to be enough time for us to build expertise in this area. And, and we are delusional to think that we're going to be able to do so in a short period of time. This is very complex. I would say that I know this is about net zero emissions and not divestments, but whatever we divested in 2021, I am certain without even seeing the numbers that did cost us at least in the tens of millions of dollars. Because the energy sector was one of the most profitable, one of the best performing in the stock market last year. Divesting, by the way, energy stocks, I just want to kind of make people understand, does not do anything in terms of reducing, reducing emissions or carbon footprints or anything like that in the world. All it does is at best lower the valuation of the companies that do so. I also want to make it clear that, and again, I'm not an expert on this, but I probably know a little bit. Many of the companies that are actually investing in clean energy initiatives and zero emissions and all that are in fact the ones who are emitting the most. Some of the companies with the largest footprints, the shells, the mobiles, all these, they are the ones who are investing the most in clean energy technologies. And if we don't invest in them, we might be actually doing the opposite of what we intend to do, which is to have more clean energy in the world. Again, very complex issue. I, I can't imagine that in one month, we're gonna bring ourselves into an, like up to the level that we can actually make informed decisions. I don't, I don't know. Like, I don't want to say too much, but like, I think it's a very, very complex issue, much more than most people even imagine.
Thank you, Effie. Allison, your hands up?
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to, you know, obviously the motion's on the table and it's been seconded, just flag a couple of things from a timing perspective. But the E S G team did circulate the full plan, I believe in January. And so just want to be mindful that, that we as trustees have had it for, at least I believe it went to the full board. It may have only gone to the executive committee because of a propless question. But just, we have had it for a substantial amount of time. And because it is so delayed and at least one of the other three boards have already passed the plan. And it's, you know, starting to leak, the controller's office and the other board are planning to do an announcement about the net zero implementation plan the first week of April. And so I just want to make sure the trustees are aware of that.
Thank you, Allison. I do want to add this part, right? So you know, I believe that, you know, at the end of the day, what's important is that we all make best informed decisions. And you know, this may have, you know, been presented or put in everyone's, put on the SharePoint or what have you back in January. But if you have people that are saying openly that they need time to consider it. And you know, and to, you know, with an understanding that if it doesn't get approved right now, like literally, it's not going to kind of change the world in any kind of significant way, right? Then I believe that, you know, taking that extra time may be worth it. So I would agree with, you know, the, the motion to to table this and have folks take time to consider it. So now I see three hands up. I see Donald, your hand, Tony, your hand, and Greg, your hand.
Yes, and I want to be clear and state for the record, right? I'm not saying that I disagree with the, the plan itself. I just need to look over the entirety of the plan before casting my vote on this.
Right. And, and I, I, I feel you on that one too. Let's see. I don't know which one of you had, you guys' hands were up first, Tony.
I'll be third. I, I can wait.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, I just wanted to say follow suit. T R S also tabled for the similar reasons last week, and I think they're also very supportive of this. But we're following suit with, we would be following suit with T R S with just taking some time to study this and learn more about it.
Thank you, Tony. Greg?
Yeah, I just, well, I think Tony put it well. Like, I think we need to be careful. And I, and I think it doesn't really hurt anything for us to, in, in exercising our fiduciary responsibilities carefully and deliberately to move slowly and to table this would, would be a wise move.
Okay. So there is a motion to table the approval of the net zero implementation plan. You know, I would say although, well, did we define until when? Maybe it might be important to do that.
Yes. In my motion, brother chair, I did it to next month's meeting.
Okay, fair enough. So there is a current motion on the table to table the approval of the net zero implementation plan until next month. Or next month's meeting, sorry. All those in favor of tabling the net zero implementation plan or voting on the net zero implementation plan, please indicate your approval now.
I'm on the motion to table.
I'm interested.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, Marjorie.
Hi, Phoebe.
Hi, Chanille.
Okay, are there any? Oh, okay. Are there any opposed to tabling?
Allison opposed.
Okay. And are there any abstentions?
Russ abstaining as well.
Russ abstains and Cherie abstained as well? I'm sorry. Cherie, you abstained?
Me abstained, but there was another person that.
Yeah, and.
I also abstained, Tom.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna say, Alex, how many trustees do we have?
Sixteen, Chair. So.
So we have twelve in favor. Three abstentions and one opposed.
Thirteen in favor, I think, unless I'm miscounting.
No, we had one opposed. You had three abstentions, one opposed. That's four.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair. I only caught two abstentions. I have Russ, Cherie, and.
Jessamyn abstains.
And Jessamyn.
Thank you so much.
You have one opposed, which was Allison, and everyone else approves tabling. Okay, we getting there.
If I might, if anybody has questions upon your review of the plan and want to discuss them with me or our office, then please, I, I, I guess maybe the best way would be to reach out through Antonio. Or if you, the guys, many of you know me, feel free to reach out directly, but happy to do it either through Antonio or through Allison. I, I welcome any questions or discussion that folks are interested in. And with that, I'm gonna say good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. All right, y'all. We getting there. So the next item on the agenda is calendar item twenty-three, investment strategy overview. May I have a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Thank you. And may I have a second, please?
Second, Effie.
Thank you, Effie. Antonio, can you please provide the overview?
I, I will. And I actually want to do a time check. I know it's seven seventeen, y'all, and I've put this off for, for a little while. You know, and I also know that we have one more item for consideration and action. So while I'm happy to give the presentation, I had prepared about twenty to twenty-five minutes of remarks. So I did want to, to ask, and I know Sandy had just reached out to you, Tom. So I just wanted to do that time check because there is an actual item for action on the agenda after me. So just, I'm throwing that out there. I know it's already been a long day. It's been three hours and twenty minutes for folks, so.
Okay. So I just have a question, Antonio, like, would, like, what would be the impact of giving us this investment strategy overview at our next meeting? Like, like.
I mean, it is.
Missing anything significant between now and our next meeting by not having this overview?
No, I, I, I put it this way. I think that, look, I think there has been a lot of discussion, a lot of kind of correspondence back and forth about my department, right? And, you know, it's the development, why it exists and things like that. And so I, I wanted to give some history and context for you all. And for instance, I mean, I know some folks know that this board has expanded from seven to twenty-seven people over time, right? And that there were times in person where we'd miss quorum for quarters at a time. And so, you know, in addition that no New York City retirement system had ever done an asset liability study. And so it was talking about some of the rationale for why having folks in-house in addition to your other advisors was important. We're gonna go through some of the decisions that we'd made, some of the implications of some of the modeling, the implications of the asset liability study, and the implications of what that ended up meaning for our relationships with some of our other advisors. And how I think there's a, there is a path forward for, for working together. That can wait, right? As I said, like, the, the, those issues aren't going anywhere. We're continuing to work hard. We're continuing to engage with, with the controller's office, with your consultants. But that is, that's really what the overview was about. But I'm happy to do that when there, there's more time, because it's not an action, action item.
Thank you. So, you know, it's, since there's nothing to vote on here, you know, maybe we can have this, this particular part of the conversation at, at our next meeting.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you.
Just thank you and keep helping us as the top performer.
Yeah.
That's about all I'll understand. We're doing great. So thank you.
All right, y'all. So, you know, the final item on this evening's agenda is calendar item twenty-four, adoption of the actuary's determination for the preliminary fiscal year 2024 employer contribution to the New York City Board of Education Retirement System. May I have a motion to consider?
I'll move Donald Esbit.
Thank you, Donald. And may I have a second, please?
Marjorie?
Thank you, Marjorie. Marek, could you please tell us about this resolution?
Sure. And I am gonna share my screen and shorten my presentation to one page. Okay, it should be, can you see the one page on the screen right now?
I can. The text is small.
All right. Well, let me, I don't know if I can.
You can zoom in individually, Tom, at the top.
Is that better?
Yeah. You might just have to scroll up and down a little bit. There you go.
Okay. So this is our preliminary 2024 employer contribution for BRRRRS. This is a calculation my office does every March. It is the preliminary calculation. So it can change and often does change by a little bit. The final employer contribution is calculated during the fiscal year. And a full report is presented later on with all the details. However, this is the preliminary calculation. It's based on a snapshot of data that occurred last June thirtieth. So we do the calculations as of last June thirtieth. We roll them forward with interest to the upcoming fiscal year, which starts this July first. There's three components to the employer contribution. The normal cost, which is the cost for actives for earning one additional year of service. That's a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. There's a second component. It's the amortization payments for your unfunded liabilities. That total amortization payment is down here. It's this thirty-seven million dollars. There's a reimbursement of administrative expenses that came out of the plan for the administration of the plan that we, we get reimbursed from the employer with interest. That's this forty-one million. The total of those three components adds up to two hundred and thirty-five million. So that's your preliminary contribution. I had other comments, but those aren't urgent and can wait till future other presentations. I'm, I'll probably be on the agenda next month as well. So I'll just pause right here and take any questions if you have them. If not, we request that the board adopt these preliminary calculations.
Okay, I have a question. So could you explain a bit about the administrative expenses part? Like, I'm, I'm trying to understand what that means.
Oh, that, that is simply the, the administrative expenses that go to funding BRRRRS. It's not even a number we calculate. We, we, I think we get it from the controller. We get a number, maybe it's from O M B, but we get a number that tells us this is the assets that were taken out of the system for administrative expenses. And then we just charge the city and the other obligors a reimbursement to get those assets back into the plan with interest.
Okay, because I'm trying to understand what those administrative expenses actually are. That's a big number. It's like, you know, forty point seven million dollars. So, you know, when we look at, you know, all of these numbers, it's not a small number. So I'm, I'm really trying to understand what are some, perhaps some examples of administrative expenses?
Us. It's us.
It's our budget.
I think it's the BRRR's budget and I, you know, I don't have the breakdown in front of me. I can dig into it if you'd like. But what's the, this is a number that's given to us.
Okay. Thank you. Cause I, I think when we, when I look at that number and, and we say it's us, it's like the budget. I don't recall the BRRR's budget being forty point seven million dollars last year. So I think it would have to be a little more to it than that. So I would love to understand what that means.
Sure. Let me get the details and forward it to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? All right, hearing none. Let's vote. So all in favor of adopting? So all in favor of adopting the Actuary's Determination for the Preliminary F Y twenty-four Employer Contribution to BRRRAS, please indicate your approval. Aye, Tom?
Aye, Tony.
Aye, Cherie.
Aye, Janelle.
Aye, Russ.
Hi, Allison.
Hi, Allison.
Aye, Effie.
Are there any opposed? And are there any abstentions? Okay, with that, the motion carries. Okay, y'all. That concludes the agenda for this meeting. The date of the next meeting of the BRRRAS Board of Trustees is scheduled for Tuesday, April eighteenth. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move down.
Thank you, Donald.
Seconded.
Seconded. Seconded. Everybody seconded.
I have energy there. That's good.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take one. So I'm gonna say Janelle. All right? So, and, and all in favor? Aye, Tom?
Aye, Russ.
Hi, Jessamine.
All right. Any opposed that want to keep this going? All right, good. Any abstentions? All right, good.
We were having so much fun.
All right. Thank you, and we are adjourned.